Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the February 19th, 2025 Select Board Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We're going to open the Select Board Meeting first. We're going to take through number two on announcements, the legislative update. Then we're going to recess and open the County Commissioners Meeting. And the reason for the timeline is that our legislative folks have a commitment that they need to get to. So we want to let them do their update for us as early as possible. So we will accept the agenda with the exception of the Town Management Report has been, will be postponed until
March 5th.
March 5th, our next meeting.
And do you want to just know that Dr. McNabb is?
Yes, and we will be taking all votes by roll call. Dr. McNabb is online tonight. Okay, so I will announce that this Select Board Meeting is being audio and video recorded, and we'll go straight to our legislative update. Julian and Thomas, Senator Seer and Representative Mokely, I should say.
Good evening, everybody. All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Thomas Mokely. I am the new State Representative for the Barnstable-Dukes and Nantucket District. It's my pleasure to be here today. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that are, you know, sort of maybe new to the legislative calendar. And Senator Seer, you know, with all this sort of legislative gravitas, we'll be able to update you on a number of things that I know have been recurring calendar items. So the first one is actually a new piece of legislation that the Senator and I introduced in this session related to something that I know has come up before this body before, which is improving access to the Housing Court. Up until now, the Housing Court has not served Nantucket and Dukes Counties. And so we introduced a bill that would require them to sit in Nantucket and Dukes Counties regularly. The Housing Court, I'm a former Assistant District Attorney, know a lot of lawyers in the area, and know that the Housing Court is one that really improves access to justice in the housing space. There's staff members and judges that are specialized in that area. The clerks' offices have templates in order to help people, like tenants, for example, who may not have access to attorneys to represent them in order to maneuver their way through the process themselves. They have a capacity for helping people on an individual basis that the district courts, who do have concurrent jurisdiction on those things, don't have the bandwidth for because of all the other things that they're dealing with. Another court-related issue, because I'm interested in access to justice, is one of the things that I want to work on in the legislature, is introducing a bill that would require the Trial Court Department to do a study on Barnstable-Dukes and Nantucket Counties in order to assess the relative staffing levels, caseloads, the interpreter services, and a number of other things. Because my feeling is both through anecdotal information from people that I've met with, as well as my own professional experiences, that our region has been vastly underserved in this area, even if you compare it to other places in the state that have similar year-round populations, not even taking into the fact that our area has this booming seasonal population that is also served by the courts. I also have a very brief update related to the power outage from the Stroll. I've spoken with the Governor's Office. Governor Maury Healy has been very active in making sure that Nantucket gets some attention as a result of this and Nantucket businesses. So she did everything that the state needed to do, including declaring a state of emergency specifically related to that, so that the Federal Small Business Administration loans will be able to carry, hopefully, you know, if the feds move on it, will be available to the small businesses here in town. Peter Burke from the Nantucket Chamber of Commerce has been putting a lot of work into this, so I want to thank him as well for his work. And anything that our offices can do to be supportive of that, absolutely, we're ready to be there for it. So again, thank you for having me. I want to make sure that your attendees, both in person and on Zoom, know that they can get in touch with my office anytime. Thomas.Mokely, M-O-A-K-L-E-Y, at mahouse.gov. And looking forward to working with you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Thomas. Thomas has really hit the ground running. What is this, week six? It's week six, and he has been a remarkably good partner, right? And as you folks know, this is actually my ninth year in this position. And with Thomas's predecessor, Dylan Fernandez, we had a really strong partnership in representing the island and really had sort of an ethos of, even though we're not islanders ourselves, of showing up, of really appreciating and understanding the unique needs of the island. And Thomas is following right up in that tradition. And I'm especially grateful for his expertise in the criminal justice system, you know, as his remarks in the Housing Court and others have shown. I think it's been hard, I know it's been hard for islanders to access state resources within the judiciary. I think we can do better, and I'm really grateful to have Thomas's expertise in an area of state government. This is going to be very helpful for us. So excited, grateful for the partnership. We've had a great day today. We were at Saltmarsh, our island home. We had a great tour of the high school. We're on Whaler Word, the local access show the high school does. So it's been a really wonderful day here, as it always is. A number of updates, both from the last session and then what we can kind of expect moving forward into this session, and then certainly glad to take any questions from the board. So the biggest thing the legislature got done last session as it relates to Nantucket and all of the Cape and Islands is the Affordable Homes Act. This was a $5.1 billion investment in housing across Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a housing crisis across the state. We are short about 220,000 housing units that we need by the end of this decade. But nowhere is this crisis more acute and worse than here on Nantucket. You folks know that. Not only do you know that, but Nantucketers, Rinn islanders, were just arguably the most effective advocates and the most vocal, compelling advocates throughout the debate of the Affordable Homes Act. And we were able to secure the Seasonal Communities Designation that is now law within the Affordable Homes Act. And I know that you all know a lot about this, because you've been the most key of partners for us in figuring this out. But just for the public, the Seasonal Communities Designation allows municipalities that have fluctuating populations and seasonal housing demands, you know, just like ours here on island, to access a sort of special toolkit of policies that towns like Nantucket, like Provincetown, like the Vineyard, like Chatham, have requested from the legislature. And often, you've had to go about doing that through sort of a piecemeal Home Rule process. That's how you all created your year-round housing trust. That's how you all have been trying to address a number of these pieces. So what we did with the Seasonal Communities Designation is just put a number of these tools into the designation and say, hey, if you meet the designation, which Nantucket is automatically in the designation, as is Martha's Vineyard, as are all towns on Cape Cod, with 35% or more of their housing is occupied as second or third homes, then you're able to do, you're able to implement certain housing policies to both develop and preserve year-round housing. First is establishment of a year-round housing trust fund without requiring a Home Rule petition. Nantucket, you all already did this. You paved the way on it. But this is going to allow other towns across the region to have that year-round trust, so we can subsidize year-round housing. The other tools that are in here, the ability to, for a town to purchase or subsidize year-round deed restrictions, right, to create below-market housing. Towns are enabled to now provide, if you have a Seasonal Communities Designation, you can provide housing to your municipal workforce. This is something you could not do for year-round, long-term workforce. This is now enabled under law. This is something we know Nantucket has asked, every town has asked us to do, other communities have. Also, under Seasonal Communities, municipalities are able to increase their residential property tax exemption cap from 35% up to 50% to support year-round residents. And towns under the Seasonal Communities Designation are encouraged to adopt bylaws to allow tiny homes and also merger and undersized lots, all for year-round housing. Part of Seasonal Communities is an advisory council. Nantucket has a seat on that council. We're actually trying to get a few more, a few more seats for Nantucket on that council. But really, the idea is to, this is going to be the start of a real policy framework for us to address our housing challenges. Also created in the Affordable Homes Act is an Office of Liberal Communities and Community Services. And this is an office that's specifically geared to support rural and seasonal communities around housing needs. You know, so many of our towns have mighty, if a small number of staff members and may not have the expertise, we really feel the state should be stepping in, providing support. So that's the very good news on Seasonal Communities. This is a big deal, arguably one of the biggest things we've delivered since the Cape Cod Mines Water Protection Fund. What was left on the table in that debate, of course, was the local option transfer fee. No community spoke more resoundingly or was more compelling in your push for a local option transfer fee. We fell short on this, largely actually due to some politics, not only of opposition to a transfer fee ability statewide as a local option, but also some dynamics, unfortunately, between the House and the Senate. We are coming back on this. Often, in policymaking on Beacon Hill, we have to try, as I think folks know, one, two, three, or more sessions to get it done. But we're really going to continue to count on Nantucket as really the key champion of this. I will tell you folks, we got very close to getting something for Nantucket, for Martha's Vineyard, possibly for the Cape. And so I want to come back on this. I think perhaps the Seasonal Communities Designation could be a way for us to say, hey, look, if you're a seasonal community, maybe that's the way that you can have a local option transfer fee. My colleagues are beginning to understand just the steepness of the hill that we have here. That truly is unique. And so expect to see some senators traveling to the island to learn more about this. And just really, please, 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 let's not give up on this. Transfer fee presents a really promising revenue source. And, you know, just thank you for your continued support. A few other topics we've been working on for the island. I know our island home, there's a proposal going before town meeting related to a new, a new our island home. There has been some regulatory questions, particularly, Nantucket's quite unique here. You basically have the last municipally-owned and operated skilled nursing facility in the state. Several other towns had done this in the past, and they have gotten out of that business. So I know that when Nantucket had approached the Department of Public Health for the regulatory process, you were initially told that there was a $200,000 non-refundable fee for that application, and that you may have to put, spend a certain percentage of the project in community benefits, which could be three or more million dollars. I have worked very directly with the Commissioner of Public Health. I chair, I'm the Senate Chair of the Joint Committee on Public Health, and I work closely with Commissioner Goldstein. We have discussed this issue. The current regulations, as they're written, never envisioned a municipality coming forward with a project like this. And we don't expect that the state is going to require Nantucket to, the town of Nantucket, to pay an application fee or to pay a community benefits, community benefits. Folks may remember the community benefits that flowed from the new hospital, right? So we're working on that. There may need to be some regulatory amendments, but I just want to assure voters at town meeting that this is something that, should voters move forward on this proposal at town meeting and the ballot, that we're going to make sure that you're not, not caught up in that regulatory red tape. Thomas, you should have mentioned this, but I guess I'll bring it up around, we have heard from a number of constituents, as you folks have heard, around the real headache that it is here on the island to get your vehicle inspected by the Registry of Motor Vehicles, the real limited, the real just one provider that we have on the island. We don't have sort of formal solutions yet, but we have met with Mast dot on this issue. And we're really trying to figure out how we can have a more sustainable options for islanders to get their car inspected. It's not an acceptable solution to either have to bring your car off island, which is remarkably expensive, or to be forced to basically say, hey, look, I can't get my car inspected, and have to be in that scenario. So we are, this issue is on our agenda, and we're trying to explore different avenues towards that. Steamship Authority, we always were paying attention to the Steamship Authority. Was really delighted to see the first of several new freight boats that are going to come online. This is the MV Barnstable, is in operation. We have two more coming. There may be a fourth that they actually purchase. Interoperability of freight, we think, is going to be very key around having much more reliability. Currently, all of the boats that are operated are quite unique, which leads to staffing issues and challenges. There was an embarkation fee bill that was debated and advanced last session. The Senate moved to increase the embarkation fee, basically by doubling it. So currently, the embarkation fee is 50 cents. The Senate passed a bill to move it to a dollar. The original proposal had been $2. We had heard from this board that that was maybe a bit hefty, particularly considering, you know, the rate increases from the Steamship Authority, but also particularly Tisbury and Oak Bluffs and Hyannis had been sort of clamoring for an increase. So we felt that the, you know, a sort of dollar increase, it hadn't been increased since it was first established in the early aughts. That advanced in the Senate. At the end of the day, as the last session, it did not advance in the House. So we're going to be coming back on that issue. Thomas talked about the real attention the governor and her team and our teams have given to the Stroll power outage. That was very unfortunate, and really going to hope that this SBA assistance, the town has been very proactive on, and of course, the Nantucket Chamber and others, we're going to be hoping that that should provide some help, although anything dealing with Washington these days is quite, well, things are quite uncertain, I suppose, is a kind way of saying it. Other topics and more local initiatives, in the FY '25 budget, we were able to secure $50,000 for the Nantucket Museum of African-American History for upgrades related to security at the African-American Meeting House, something that we're really proud to have delivered. And then on home rules, Nantucket has the distinction of being the municipality that files the most home rules of any town in Massachusetts. Actually, as this, you're not alone, though. The Cape and Islands District has a penchant for home rules. I think it's indicative of the real municipal kind of activism and problem-solving and policymaking that we have here on the Cape and Islands. So my district actually has more home rules than anyone else, even more than Senator Mark, who I think has 54, 53 communities in western Massachusetts. Of these home rules, we were able to get a number of them done, particularly the Article 97s and some of these more routine topics. I do want to note that several of Nantucket's home rules did not pass in the last legislative session despite our best efforts. You know, and I do want to note that it becomes more difficult for a home rule to pass if they are controversial or they have meaningful opposition during the hearing process. Transfer fee, I think, is an example, right? There's some opposition to that. The home rule related to fertilizer and pesticide regulation, there's some opposition to that from industry. And I also expect this is why the NP and EDC home rule was sent to study last session by the relevant committee. So we're going to be trying again this session. But I do want to manage expectations when there's opposition to home rules. Home rules are typically seen as either being sort of non-controversial, routine items that we just passed. If there's some opposition to it, it will take several tries. And if the community is sort of divided on a given issue, it gets hard for us to take action. So that's the home rule update. I know that the town certainly is interested in the Municipal Empowerment Act. This is a bill that Governor Healy had filed last session. She's going to be filing it again, or she refilled it again in January. The goal is to give cities and towns more flexibility and fiscal management, and also some ability to increase locally-generated revenue. This has been, you know, there's a whole list of reforms around property tax relief for seniors, making hybrid meeting public participation a permanent part of Massachusetts law. I've heard from my towns that they're a real fan of these tools. And so we're going to be working to advance this bill, and then also see what other local empowerment initiatives we can advance. There's also a bill related to modernizing funding for community media programming that I know the town's interested in, and that's something I'm supporting and trying to make an effort at. We got a lot done last session, in addition to the Affordable Homes Act. I was proud to be the lead on the Mass Parentage Act that updated our parentage laws in Massachusetts to make sure that families, really non-traditional families, LGBTQ families, like my sister-in-law's family, are protected under law related to parentage rights. That's something that we got done. The Mental Health ABC Act, which I was the lead sponsor of, really kind of best-in-the-nation parity law we worked to implement. And we also paired that with $192 million investment in our behavioral health workforce. This includes specific enumeration for providers in geographically-isolated communities like Nantucket. And this is also paired with an investment in a community behavioral health center. Traditionally, when these sort of centers and resources are brought across the Cape and Islands, you know, they say Cape and Islands, and they put something on Hyannis. We said that wasn't good enough, and we have a CBHC funded here on island, which is making a difference. Certainly, I'm very concerned about proposed cuts in the governor's budget to both PCASIT, which is an inpatient psychiatric facility that's in Born, and also a proposal to cut Department of Mental Health caseworkers by 50%. We're going to be working to restore that. In the budget, we cannot be losing inpatient psychiatric beds on the Cape and Islands, and particularly for Nantucket, where, you know, those beds are far away enough that we need to make sure that we're preserving them. Of course, also proud to have been one of the key senators to get signed into law a ban on PFAS and firefighter turnout gear. And shout out to many islanders who were very vocal and effective advocates in getting that done. And then, of course, the funding, the collaborative approach we took to securing $1.7 billion in federal funding to replace the Sagamore Bridge. That was a very big win for Massachusetts, one of the largest federal awards ever made. I don't know if we'll be getting $1.7 billion for the Born Bridge replacement under this current administration, so we have our work cut out for us. And so this session, I continue to focus, of course, on our local priorities. Some of the pieces Thomas focused on, I want to get the Mass PFAS Act, which is an omnibus legislation that I've filed and championed over the finish line around comprehensively addressing PFAS. Housing, of course, remains a topic. And then we have bills on dozens of issues, including a bill around closing a loophole related to dark money in being spent at the municipal level and municipal governance. Nantucket has been ground zero for, you know, for political spending before town meeting. Because of a loophole in our current law, that's not, you don't have to report that, right? And I really feel that if you're spending political money at town meeting, you should be playing under the same rules that Thomas and I have to play under when we run for public office, that all of you, if you have any sort of campaign finance work, have to do in the Select Board. So we're going to work to get that done. So I know that's a big update. We try really hard to show up, to work collaboratively. I'm really grateful for the opportunity to work with each of you. We speak on a regular basis. And just whatever we can do, we are here. It's a real honor to represent this island and to be in public service in partnership with you, with each of you. And we're glad to take any questions you may have.
Thanks to both of you. Any questions from the board? That's a lot. Thank you.
I have someone's question one, I heard it, and it was about Bill 668, and it reminded me of about time.
I'll start over. Bill 668, it has to do with remote participation. Was Lexington or someone filed it? Someone was asking what the status of that would be.
So I believe the remote participation, do you mean remote participation for a board like this? Or do you mean remote participation at town meeting?
It was, I think the bill's about town meeting, I believe.
All right. I'll have to look at the town meeting piece. I know the remote participation that we're operating under tonight will expire at the end of March. We have a supplemental budget the governor will be filing that I expect we will extend this. I'd like to just extend this permanently in law. This is working. This has actually really helped. Remote participation has been key. We fought for this on Beacon Hill, and that now in our joint rules, or in the rules at least the Senate's passed, and also the rules the House has passed. Sometimes, the House and Senate often have a tendency of not agreeing. But remote participation's been a real game changer, right? When we have committee hearings, islanders can weigh in with Beacon Hill without having to schlep off island. And I broadly tend to think this makes a lot of sense. So I can look into that specific bill, but I think first order of business is getting the remote participation that's working right now, that we're using tonight, you know, taking that, taking that forward.
One other question.
Sure.
The state just did primary accessory drilling units, which is kind of nonsensical for us, because we already allow three.
Yeah.
So is there any thoughts of carving something out through the Seasonal Act or, you know, or something else? So that we, because we're trying as a community to figure out how do we handle, you know, we've got tertiary, you know, you know what we all have, but...
Yeah, primary, secondary, tertiary, and now potentially a fourth of the ADU.
Yeah, now we layer a fourth on top, and we, you know, this island will sink. So the question is, what do we do? Like, you know?
So the final ADU to guidance that was just, that just issued, reiterates that communities can have some common sense rules, right, around restricting ADU occupancy to year round. I think in the case of Nantucket, you effectively had moved forward with tertiary effectively was an ADU effectively, right? So I think you may, you may want to look at your tertiary bylaw and effectively see, basically, is that your ADU bylaw? That's sort of compliant there. Would defer to town council on this, but I think that's, that's the guidance. But as far as what has come out of the state, I think the key piece that we were initially concerned at, about that there was not restrictions around year-round occupancy, right? We don't want to, we already have enough of a challenge around second, third, fourth homes, investment properties, that ADUs really are about a tool around attainable affordable housing that's year round. And that's contained in the final, in that final guidance. But I think for the purposes of Nantucket, tertiary is effectively ADU. And so how you marry that from a bylaw perspective, I would again defer to town council.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
We'll get to off in plenty of time for your next event. Thanks for making the trip down. Malcolm, oh, wait, Malcolm has a question. Hold on, before you leave. Malcolm?
Yes. Well, welcome to the island. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person tonight. You know, we've had some issues with the wind farms off our shores. And some of us kind of felt that we never had support from the state or the federal government or our representatives. Would you comment on that? If what you, our opinion of that is, and would you help us in the future?
What's my comment? I mean, during, you know, I think you're talking about the blade failure this summer, which was unacceptable. I was here at this meeting in person, even though I was invited to participate in the meeting remotely. I came in person, really said it was unacceptable, and, you know, have been in very routine, regular contact with both town administration, board members, especially the chair, and particularly figuring out, how do you bring in relevant authorities here? You know, the state, the state was, did not have sort of relevant authority related to response. That was the, that was Bessie. And we really pushed hard to make sure that we got a number of both federal and state agencies here answering questions, providing response. You know, so I think in an instance like that, right, often in these jobs, you know, you may not have all the answers. You may not have the authority on a given topic, or the authority on, you know, to decide a certain issue or not. And so what I have really always sought to do, and Dylan has really sought to do, and I expect Thomas is going to continue to seek to do, is to be a resource and to be an advocate. And in this case, I think really making sure that the town had the, the access to information, the responsiveness of both state agencies and federal agencies, and also responsiveness from the relevant parties involved. And I hope ultimately that you felt that you folks had that responsiveness. I mean, we, I alone in my office, I know, spent, you know, countless hours responding to concerns, trying to advocate for making sure that we got relevant state and federal agencies here to answer questions, and worked quite closely, closely with particularly town administration and particularly with, with the chair of the board. So, you know, would encourage folks, if you ever have questions or concerns, or feel like you're not getting answers on something, please just pick up the phone and give me a call. I think all of you, I think I have all of your cell phone. If you don't have my cell phone, please, we'll share it with you and make sure you get it, right? But, but often, particularly in a situation where, you know, we may not have all the answers, we may not have the authority specifically from a state level, I really aim to, to make sure that we're, we're at least trying to connect the dots and having good coordination. I think that was a bit of a halting process initially, right? I remember, I remember getting a text message, being like, hey, do you have the town manager's cell phone number? And, you know, I thought at the time, I said, what the heck? You don't, y'all don't have the contact information for Libby Gibson or the chair of the Select Board or relevant authorities on the island? That's a major problem. But I think since, since that initial sort of halting response, there was a very, I think, a significant and consistent response. think, a significant and consistent response, certainly from state agencies and I hope from federal agencies. I think my ability to get responsiveness from federal agencies at this point is probably greatly diminished, but if you need us to make those requests, we're certainly glad to, moving forward. Does that answer your question, Malcolm?
Yes. Sometime we'll sit and have coffee and talk about it.
Please, give me, give me a call after this meeting, and I would, I would love to hear, you know, any and all feedback, whether it's, you know, work that our office is doing or just how we can ensure the state can be more responsive. I will say broadly, you know, the Haley Driscoll administration has really impressed me in how responsive they have been to island concerns, both on Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard. If you look at a number of the policies that were put forward, if you look at the resources that are coming to the region in the governor's draft capital plan, if you look at a whole host of funding and initiatives, the prioritization of housing, they've been, you know, quite present and something that I've really, I've really been impressed with what we've been able to deliver in recent years for, for islanders, and I think I want to make sure that we're going to be able to keep it up. I do want to be very honest. I think we're, we're going into a bit of uncharted territory. I think the state is going to expect, could expect very significant federal cuts that may be quite difficult for us to backfill in a whole host, in a whole host of, in a myriad of areas, but we will cross that bridge with all of y'all collaboratively. So please, don't ever hesitate to reach out for me, you know, to me, to Thomas. We are here to continue to be a resource for all of you.
Thanks.
I'll just add very briefly, Mr. McNabb. Obviously, I'm brand new to this office, so I can't speak with authority about the history, but as the senator said, you know, we want to be a resource to make sure that, you know, those who signed a Good Neighbor Agreement are actually a good neighbor to the island and make sure that both the town and the companies have the, have the communications resources and anything that we can do to help at the state level to make sure that that, that agreement is honored. And in the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to witness Senator Seer working and his staff working, and they were in constant contact with the many communities that he represents. I think they do an incredible job at making themselves available to the communities that we share, and I'm certainly very privileged to sort of learn how they manage constituent services there, so appreciate that.
Madam Chair, may I just follow up? On an issue? You know, like, please just call us, right? You know, I represent 19 communities, 180,000 people, so we only often know what's going on based on what we hear from folks, so please, please, continue good lines of communication is always very helpful.
Can I, can I just follow up on, on that briefly? Because Matt, Matt and I were the two original board members that were involved when the Good Neighbor Agreement was negotiated, and I think we, we as a board and the, and the community at large even more vehemently, really feel misled by the representations that were given back in 2020, when this was all happening in the midst of 9,000 meetings for the pandemic. And the visual simulations that we were given were not accurate. The promises on the lighting, it's, they've been fully lit for quite a long time now. That never should have happened. The safety and the environmental impacts on the sea life are just far greater than the information that we were provided when we were offered a financial settlement based on just, just the visual impact on our historic landmark, which again is far more impactful than the simulations we were shown. So just so you understand a little bit more about where the community is coming from, and there is a big outcry for us to exit the Good Neighbor Agreement, where we have not at this point been advised that that will actually help us, but where we continue to discuss this in executive session, what our options are.
Yeah, I would defer to town council about, about the Good Neighbor Agreement and such, but I think folks are right to be quite upset. You know, I can't believe these lights are still on, like WTF, like this is, like, this is the most simple, relatively simple technology that should be implemented, and if it can't be implemented, there should be some very clear communication to the town as to why these lights that were assured that effectively, you know, would only be visible when there'd be passing aircraft would be on, right? And I don't have an answer on that, and I'm kind of pissed that I don't have an answer on it, and I'm more pissed and irked that the town doesn't have an answer on that, right? So, you know, again, defer to council and, you know, what, what your advice is as far as the determinations the town wants to make, but I, I understand and share the frustration, particularly with some of these elements. I get it.
I can follow up. We've, we've done some, we've looked into it, we've done some analysis. It was about a 6% decrease in business to the island, more for some businesses than others. There's some uncertainty, you know, starting in July, when it happened through the rest of the season, and there's some uncertainty how it will impact us going forward. And so I think those are, you know, serious issues for us as a community and serious issues for the state if we're impacted the way we were impacted then again or worse. And so those are the, those are the things that we're grappling with and, you know, it's not something that this, you know, that this board or our, you know, or our government is really, you know, none of us know what this is or what this would be and how it would be, and I think, you know, I just, I think we kind of jumped the gun in a way, you know, and so I would just ask not to, you know, to be more careful and to understand what we're, you know, understand what we're shooting at before we shoot, you know? So anyway.
Yeah, and I would just say if there are answers that, that you folks are seeking, again, use, you know, use this as a resource, and this is where I think we can be helpful. You know, we don't make, we don't make these determinations, you know, these are made at the state level and the federal level, but again, we're a resource, and if you're not getting answers to questions you need, I'm glad to try to get them for you.
Okay. Breaking news.
Can you give us the good news now?
Breaking news. I was going to make it during select board announcements. I talked to the CEO of Vineyard Wind at 4:45 PM, and they are testing the first 12 sets of ADLS next week, so we should expect the first 12 turbines to go dark at night with the ADLS system, assuming that they, what they're doing is they're sending a helicopter over next week to test that, and then they expect to roll out another tranche of them the following month. And I was told that every new turbine will have the ADLS come on when it's commissioned. So as they're building new turbines, they will, they will have the ADLS functioning. So it's interesting, I came up tonight.
Well, I mean...
But it's, it's literally breaking news, so...
I may have sent a text message a little earlier this afternoon saying, hi, I'm on island, why, this isn't done yet? Absolutely unacceptable.
So collaborative, collaborative communication. Yeah, and, and just on another note, while I'm, I'm just going to go here, we're kind of out of order, but the other pieces of information that I learned today is that they are continuing to remove blades on the turbines that they've been ordered to remove. So there are 22 turbines that had, that remain that have blades from, that were built in the Gas Bay, Canada facility. They are, let me see, make sure I get my numbers right. They were originally ordered to remove 22 sets of blades, 66 blades, that included the AW 38 that had the failure, and so that leaves 21. They've removed four complete sets to date, and they are expecting to have a new vessel that can transport five sets of blades at a time that will be dedicated to blade removal. So the acceleration of the blade removal of the damaged blades should move forward faster. This is all weather dependent. They have to get the vessel delivered, no concrete timelines, but, but this is new progress that just got reported to me today, so. And of the 24 turbines that are out there, two of them had blades from France that were not ordered to be removed. Those blades were deemed sound. So those are the current situation, and yeah, so anyway. Yes, good news. Malcolm, did you want to follow up?
No, that's, yeah, no.
Okay. All right.
Madam Chair?
Thomas?
Yeah, I just wanted to say quickly, Senator, and also to then Rep Fernandez, thank you for working on everything that made into the seasonal communities designation. That started when I was working for the Rep's office, and you and Dylan held a series of, if I remember correctly, about two dozen meetings with island stakeholders who that would affect, and a lot of those provisions that came out of that meeting, which you, of course, remember, you filed the bill, and then a lot of those ultimately made it in that bill, so it took a couple of years, and that's just the legislative process, but thank you for being on that from the beginning.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'm going to release you now? For real?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thanks, you guys. Okay, so we are now going to go into recess for the select board meeting, and Tom is going to open the county commissioners' meeting, and we'll go through that agenda and then return to select board.
Sure, I'll call the county commissioners' meeting on February 19th at... What, Erica? 6:11 to order. Our first order of business is announcements. The county commission meeting is being audio and video, video recorded. Number three is public comment for items for, on the county agenda, will also take select board comment, or I'm sure the chair will, at that time, for items other, not otherwise on our agenda.
Campbell Sutton's hand is up. Campbell, just to confirm, this is for items not on, this is the county commissioners', so public comment for items not related to county commission, for items not on our agenda. If that is still, is that...
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping you can hear me, and I'm hoping my three minutes doesn't start until I say, thank you so much for taking my comments tonight. So I was going over the warrant with a few people, and so I have a couple of questions on it, and I...
Okay, Campbell, think...
With the county, so I just want to ask in Article 21 and Article 22 that have to do with county assessment and county budget. So my first question relating to the county is, in Article 21, it, it says something about county of Nantucket, such assessment as is required for fiscal year 2024. So I was wondering whether that was a typo or not? And the other question that I had, based on Article 22, where there's a Nantucket County Review Committee, but I wasn't able to find a Nantucket County Review Committee on the agenda portion of the webpage, and so I was sort of wondering, like, is there, is there a Nantucket County Review Committee, or are you the Nantucket County Review Committee? And the other question that I had was, is there a county manager, or is the select board the county manager?
Thank you for those questions, Campbell. We will get back to you. I, I know the answer to two of them, but we'll, we'll, we'll be responding on the website and get back to you on that. Thank you. There is no new business at this time, I believe, Erica? And next is approval of minutes and warrants.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
I forgot to note that all votes, all votes will be taken by roll call tonight as Dr. McNabb is on, is remote. Have a move by Matt, seconded by Brooke. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, as approved unanimously. Number six is official business, and that's review and adoption of the fiscal year 2026 county budget. Libby?
So this is an annual presentation to the board, and it has been reviewed with FinCom? I forget.
No, that'll be tomorrow night.
Okay, sorry. The Finance Committee acts as the County Review Committee by charter, and the county charter, that is. So this county budget is brought before the county commissioners and the county review committee, and if there is a dispute between them, it is resolved at town meeting. However, history has shown that has not been a dispute to date. So Brian's going to take us through the county budget, which has a couple of different funding sources.
Next page, Erica, please. Thank you. So within the county budget, there is the county administration and the registry of deeds, which does have administration and deeds excise within it. Next. Revenue sources are town assessment, deeds excise revenue, recording fees, corrections, deeds excise, which is a contribution for the public safety facility that we're in. We need to use any registry of deeds, excise fund balance, or any county fund balance. Next slide, please, Erica. For fiscal '26, we're projecting revenue from the town assessment, $240,605. Deeds excise receipts, $584,375, which is projected and presented to us by the registrar. Recording fees of $141,375. Corrections deeds excise, which is the contribution for the debt service to this facility, $250,000. And then we are projecting to use, which will take you through the, some money from the county fund balance of $130,408. Total projected revenue, $1,346,763. County funding requirement, which is also known as the maintenance of effort, by law the county must provide, be, provide a certain amount of non-deeds excise revenue to the registry. It must, it must increase by two and a half percent every year. That amount that is required to be provided this year is the $240,605. Projected expenses within county administration, this year we're projecting $474,506. There is, we're proposing two employees to be funded through the county, a real estate specialist, real estate specialist too, to help with the myriad of real, real estate issues that exist in the county, between the county and the town, and we're proposing to fund a events coordinator position as well through the county. It also resides in, a portion of that resides in the town through culture and tourism, and then normal other expenses consisting of legal and professional services within the county administration, within registry of deeds, three full-time employees, administrative expenses, and then any projects that the, within deeds excise or special projects that the registrar needs to undertake for completion of any work requested by the state. Public safety, public safety facility debt service, as mentioned, the, we do get $250,000, and that is applied to the debt exclusion that funded the construction of that building and this building that we're in, and it does reduce the amount that we raise in real and personal property taxes annually to pay that debt service. All told, we're projecting $1,346,763 in expenses. Here, we just, we'll show the county commissioners, the last year we approved a budget of $1,102,231. This year, we're proposing $1,346,762. The main differences reside with the proposal of the positions in the county administration, the real estate specialist, the addition of a portion of the funding for the, the events coordinator, and then the annual salary increases and operating increases for health insurance and other contributions there. So I'm certainly happy to entertain any questions that the board might have with the budget as proposed.
Thank you, Brian. Any commissioners' comments, questions?
I would make one note, too, that this has, we have discussed this and gone over it with the registrar, and she's in support of the budget as presented.
Got it. Thank you, Brian. Concerns, comments, or motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, move by Matt, seconded by Dawn. All those in favor, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That is approved unanimously. We are, commissioners' reports, comments? Any county comments? No? Seeing none, move to adjournment, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Brooke, seconded by Matt. All those in favor, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Brooke?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Madam Chair?
Great, and now we'll return and reopen the select board meeting. We're in announcements. Libby, Erica?
I'll do these.
Yeah.
So we are in round...
So we are in round four of our committee vacancies, and we do have all the applicants in. Council for Human Services, we have one seat available, zero applicants. Council on Aging, one seat available, zero applicants. So for those two, we'll just keep those open. Council, Cultural Council, one seat available, two applicants, which are Kendall Graham and Jeremy White. The Town of Nantucket Scholarship Committee, one seat available and three applicants, Peter Morrison, Alexis Sturgis, and Jeannie Critchley. Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate seat. You've got one seat available with two applicants, Peter List and Robert Constable. And then the African Meeting House Investigation Procurement Work Group. We are currently accepting applications for the two citizen seats. Those applications are due no later than noon on Friday, February 28th. They can be mailed or dropped off to the Town Administration Office at 16 Broad Street, or they can be emailed to me at emooney@nantucket-ma.gov.
The remaining announcements are as follows. The master plan update is well underway, and the kitchen conversation kit that you can get from the Plus Office is coming to a close this Friday. And if people have kits maybe that they haven't returned yet or want to quickly get one in, that could happen, but the deadline is on Friday. We have an informational session coming up for the new DPW facility with Associated Nantucket Hunting Association Shooting and Archery Range project. That informational session is on March 6th, Thursday, March 6th, at 5:30 PM. It is remote, and you can also come to this room here, the community room, to learn more about that project, and there's additional information on the town website. There's no Select Board meeting next Wednesday, February 26th. We're back at it on Wednesday, March 5th. That's it for announcements.
Okay, any Select Board announcements or comments? Malcolm, anything? All right, we don't have any responses to questions from last week's public comment. We'll now open for public comment for items not on the agenda. And I see Megan Perry's hand up.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Excellent, thank you. I was just curious, I sent a letter to the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Select Board, and copied a couple of other people, Town Manager, Town Council, et cetera, in response to the Fire Chief's denial of wanting to submit the plans for surfside crossing to the state fire services because he felt he was satisfied with the paid engineer by the developers' response to whether or not it meets certain codes. And in the past, we've had two other Fire Chiefs say that they are not satisfied with everything. I'm just curious if the Select Board could respond to that at some point and explain why a third-party fire prevention engineer, who is free and offered by the state for anybody to have developments looked at for so long as the Fire Department requests it, why that's not being utilized? I think it would benefit our whole community. And I hadn't received any response from the Chair or the Vice Chair of the Select Board regarding it, or the Town Manager. So I figured I would ask here, maybe you missed it in your email. So if that's something you could maybe say publicly, not just on the website, so the community could maybe be a little bit at ease as to why we wouldn't get a third-party review, that'd be great. I also want to give a huge shout out to the ZBA members, who are putting in tons and tons of time reviewing this project. They're doing a great job asking all the hard questions. So I know the Select Board's very busy, but if you could find the time to maybe watch some of their meetings, they're doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Campbell Sutton?
Hi, good evening. Thank you again for hearing me. So I'm, you know, knee-deep in the articles. So I was wondering, on Article 23, that has to do rescinding unused borrowing authority, is it possible to get a chart or a table that talks about what was appropriated in the past, and which ones have been accomplished, and which ones are up for rescinding? And yeah, so thank you very much. I should be under three minutes.
Thanks, Campbell. Denise?
Thank you, Brooke. Denise Cronow, good evening. I am not speaking today on behalf of the Finance Committee, and my comments are not the position of the Committee. As the Chair of the Finance Committee, I believe it's my responsibility to represent the majority view of the Committee and stand behind our recommendations. However, I cannot support the Committee's positive motion for the funding of the proposed Our Island Home. Here are my reasons. Funding the new building will increase the town's annual subsidy to Our Island Home from $5 million to $14.5 million for the next 25 years. We will never be break even on running Our Island Home, and we cannot charge what it costs to run it. Over 25 years, the total cost of ownership of this project is greater than $350 million. In addition, in 2025, the total of proposed debt exclusions that will be presented to the voters at the ATM and STM will be over $200 million, comprising the Our Island Home, the new DPW facility, housing for town employees, the town number's bike path, and other smaller projects. Taken all together, these are the reasons I voted against the motion to adopt. I do not believe this is a fiscally prudent investment for our community, and I'm very concerned about its impact on the individual taxpayer. As the Chair, I strive to stay neutral and open-minded on the topics that appear before us. I am guided by first principles on all the articles that we review. First, are we spending every taxpayer's money in the most fiscally prudent manner? Second, does it benefit a significant portion of the community? Third, I divorce the emotion of the topic from the financial viability of the topic. And fourth, I view the idea that it's the right thing to do at any cost as the purview of the voters, not in my role as member of the Finance Committee. One other point, my position on the financial viability of this project does not negate my deep admiration and appreciation for the dedication of the Our Island Home staff. They're the reason I voted in favor of the $5 million override. In the end, I understand this is an emotional topic. It's not the first emotional topic to come before the Finance Committee, but it's the first one with such far-reaching negative financial impacts. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. Anyone else want to speak in public comment? Okay, not seeing anyone rising or hands online. We will move on. We don't have any new business. Next up is minutes, payroll warrants, treasury warrants, and pending contracts. Any questions or a motion?
Move approval?
All four?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to real estate items.
So we have our real estate specialist, Tracy McDonald, on. Might I take a brief moment to introduce our new real estate specialist, Bob Bistrowski, who's sitting in the back there observing his first, well, maybe not your first board meeting, but perhaps in person. So we're welcoming him to the town this week. And Tracy's going to take us through the real estate item, which you've already heard some of at a prior meeting. So she'll review with you what's next. Tracy?
Thank you, good evening, everybody. I'm here requesting the Select Board's acceptance of an easement grant for a rerouted sidewalk to be located on what is now known as 6 North Beach Street, the property, the Brant Project, which had a condition of their major commercial development special permit dated February 14, 2022, for a drop-off, pickup, turnoff area. I'm also requesting approval and execution of a separate license agreement for the removal of the existing sidewalk and construction of the turnoff area as indicated on the easement plan and license plan provided to you. The Select Board previously reviewed this matter at their June 5, 2024, meeting, where the Planning Director, Leslie Snell, explained the reasoning behind the condition and the special permit, and after review and discussion, the matter was remanded to, remanded for further review by the Historic District Commission, the Nantucket Historical Commission, and the Trapped Safety Work Groups. After the review of the suggested committees, the matter was again reviewed by the Select Board on September 11, 2024, where it was reported that those committees recommended moving forward with the paroxed sidewalk relocation and the construction of the drop-off area. HDC had previously approved the hardscaping plan. At that time, the Board unanimously agreed to consent to the permanent condition, and I was able to work in conjunction with Town Council, Vicky Marsh, to develop and coordinate with the owners towards the easement agreement and license agreement before you tonight. Town Council prepared all the documentation before you and reviewed with the Owners Council, Mike Wilson, and we are happy to answer any further questions you may have regarding the matter.
Okay, any questions from the Board? Motion?
It's all set, I'll move approval.
Do a second?
Second.
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye.
I just want to make a quick comment. When you look at page 60 and the different conditions and things that they have, no wonder people don't want to be hotels and want to be homes, residences. It's a lot easier to run a business out of a residence than to run a business as a business. So I just thought it was interesting.
Okay, next up, Massiquit, Tracy?
Thank you.
I actually have to recuse from this, sorry.
Dawn is recusing.
Okay. I'm presenting this matter at the request of Attorney Arthur Reed for the Select Board's permission for his clients, the owners of the properties located at 3 and 7 Massiquit Avenue for the conveyance of Lot 2 on Plan 2024-40, from 3 Massiquit LLC to the 7 Massiquit Realty Trust. Both properties are made up of previously granted yard sale parcels subject to the usual restrictions imposed in the yard sale conveyances. The current lot at 3 Massiquit is Lot 1 on Plan 10F, Lot A on Plan 2822, and Lot B on 2023-7. And as combined, is a total of 128,628 square feet in Lug 2 District. That has a minimum requirement of 80,000 square feet. Attorney Reed is requesting approval to convey Lot 2 on Plan 2024-40, which is 48,627 square feet, to 7 Massiquit, which has a current square footage of 44,460 square feet. And the conveyance would result in a conforming lot with 93,287 square feet. The conveyance would not create more than the original two lots and would still be subject to the original restrictions set forth in the proposed Declaration of Restrictions for zoning and building purposes. Attorney Reed provided the Board with a more detailed narrative, and Town Council reviewed the proposed documents with Attorney Reed, that Attorney Reed provided. The Real Estate Assessment Committee reviewed and recommended and approved this matter at their February 10, 2025, meeting. I believe Attorney Reed is on, should you have any questions. And Town Council, Vicky Marsh is also on.
Any questions from the Board?
Yeah, I guess. Could we put the maps up and just walk through it for the public? It took me a while to figure out what was happening. Can we do that?
Attorney Reed also provided a sketch of sort of the outcome, which might help as well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, show, you know, A, B, and then the outcome.
Okay, if you'd like me to take that. The, you know, the existing 3-Massiquit parcel is shown on the, just above there. We had it up a minute ago on the assessors map. And yes, outlined in blue, actually, the area between the blue parcel and the yellow circled parcel is part of a yard sale that has been subsequently conveyed to the parties. So the present time, the property that we're dealing with consists of 3-Massiquit outlined in red, outlined in blue, rather, 7-Massiquit outlined in yellow, and the area in between, which has been merged into those two lots previously. If you can drop down now to the next picture. That shows 3-Massiquit being divided, 3-Massiquit including all the land that it has acquired through the yard sale process, being divided into lots 1 and 2. Lot 1 is a conforming lot containing 80, just over 80,000 square feet, the minimum required in the Lug 2 District. Lot 2 contains approximately 47,000 square feet, and will be combined with, conveyed to and combined with the ownership of 7-Massiquit containing a little over 40,000 square feet. The total area of that lot, which was partly in Lug 2 and partly in Lug 1, will be in excess of 80,000 square feet. But the portion that is in Lug 2 cannot constitute a separate building lot because it doesn't meet the lot area requirement for Lug 2. Therefore, it'll all be merged together as a single lot. And the paperwork that is being executed requires the merger of those lots, the merger of Lot 2 with 7-Massiquit as a single lot, and keeps in place the requirement that there can be no further division, conveyance separately from any other part of those lots, without, again, going back to the Select Board, as well as the Planning Board, for permission to do that. The, that, the documentation, all that has been reviewed, in fact, by Vicky Marsh on behalf of the town, and again, was approved by the Real Estate Assessment Committee last week. What we're doing here creates no new building lots. It simply moves the land that is in Lot 2 from 3-Massiquit to 7-Massiquit. I think that covers it. If there are any other questions, be happy to answer them.
That covers it for me, thank you. And I just want to, and I want to make sure, through Tracy or through, yeah, through Tracy, that can't be taken in a separate name and become a different lot. That happened to us once on Montemoy, and I want to make sure that they can't take this in a separate lot that it's written to be merged into.
Vicky, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, Matt, it's not able to be subdivided or conveyed without coming back for permission from the Select Board. So any, you know, transfer to, say, another party would require the Select Board to grant its permission to do so.
Okay, thank you. That's a question I asked because I didn't ask it once, and it got me. So, thank you.
I'm well, Matt, if I may add, I'm well aware of that issue, and we've, I've made every attempt to make sure that this language that's in the yard sale deeds stays in any further conveyances of these yard sale parcels.
Okay, great. Any other questions or pleasure of the Board?
I'll move approval.
Second?
Okay, by roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye with Dawn recused.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Town Managers' report.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Assistant Town Manager Greg Tipton, but we do have quite a cast of staff on to go over this update. I forget how many updates we've done at this point, but well over a dozen, I think, on PFAS issues. I'm sure that the presentation will include that, but we've got Greg, our Environmental Contamination Administrator, Andrew Shapiro. Andrew's fairly new, just joined us recently and is already doing a fantastic job. Our Manager of Strategic Projects, Chuck Larson. Our Water Director, Mark Willett. Solid Waste Manager, Chris Low. Sewer Director, David Gray. And our Consultant, Andy Miller of CDM Smith. Andy's been with us for several years now, working on PFAS-related issues. So Greg, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Libby. Good evening, everybody. Libby stole my thunder. This is the 12th update to the Select Board directly out of 21 public sessions that we've had regarding PFAS since 2020. So this one is the 12th, specifically just to the Select- So, this one is the twelfth, specifically just to the Select Board, giving an overview of what we've been up to. Um, in your packet, you have our standard AIS, um, the Agenda Informa-, uh, Item Summary Form. We streamlined it a little bit more this time because it was getting into six pages long. So, we've just made it a little more streamlined and hopefully interesting to each of you. Um, and then what we're intending to do is just present what we've been up to and then hand it off to each of the members that Libby just outlined. We have, um, Andrew, Chuck, Mark, David, Chris, and Andy. So, um, you don't want to hear from me anymore? Very happy to introduce to you, uh, Andrew Shapiro, who is our new Environmental Contamination Administrator. You did meet him briefly last week when we did an update on the NUIA Conference, but I'm very happy to let Andrew update the board. Take it away, Andrew.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Yeah, so this is my first time presenting this PFAS cycle to the group. As Greg mentioned, this is the twelfth presentation to the Select Board, so this might not be new to all of you, but I think this is a useful tool for orienting ourselves before we dive into some of the town's, um, specific projects. Um, since 2020, the town has committed fifteen million dollars to addressing PFAS on the island. Um, and I'll just go over this, um, island-wide PFAS cycle very briefly, since it might not be new to everyone. Um, so PFAS have been in the environment for a long time. They were used in consumer products, um, as early as the forties or fifties, though they have been phased out to some extent out of consumer products. They are still in some products and are still in the environment. Um, PFAS were also used in firefighting foam and were required for um, use in firefighting training exercises. Um, but after PFAS are used in consumer products, they eventually make their way to the town's wastewater treatment facilities um, via domestic wastewater and the sewer systems. PFAS can also make their way into the landfill through, um, consumer products that are disposed of there. And eventually, um, people might be exposed to PFAS, um, either through food or drinking water. Um, PFAS are pretty much ubiquitous in the environment. They've been detected on Mount Everest, they've been detected, um, in, in rainwater, and they've also been detected in wells in Nantucket, unfortunately. Um, so, um, many people throughout the island have likely been exposed to PFAS in some way or another. Um, in fact, the federal government estimates that ninety-nine percent of people in the US have detectable levels of PFAS in their blood. So, this just kind of orients us on PFAS on the island. Um, I'm going to dig into a couple of these individual boxes tonight, and, um, as Libby and Greg mentioned, we have a great team tonight to help walk through some of these specific projects. So, um, next slide, please. So, first, um, Town Utility we'll talk about is the landfill, and I'm going to pass it over to Andy Miller with CDM Smith.
Okay, um, thank you, Andrew, and thank you all for having me here today. Um, so just a couple slides on, uh, what we've been doing at the landfill regarding PFAS presence. Our, our objective there has been to assess potential offsite migration of PFAS and groundwater toward residential wells and long pond. You can see in the top right, um, photo, uh, an aerial view of the landfill and Long Pond to the west, and then some homes on the other side of Long Pond, some of whom have, uh, domestic wells. Um, what we've done is initially, we developed a flow chart or a decision matrix of the steps required in doing an assessment like this, primarily so, uh, the stakeholders, you folks in town, can understand the process. Um, we had to develop some sample plans for PFAS, which have been approved by Mass DEP. And to date, we have completed three rounds of PFAS sampling at the landfill, uh, at existing monitoring wells and surface water stations. Uh, the bottom right graphic shows the groundwater flow that we know, uh, is moving from east to west towards Long Pond. Um, and what we're, what we will be working to determine is if Long Pond is just a, a discharge point or if there's a chance that the groundwater could be flowing under Long Pond and over to, um, uh, the other side of Long Pond where those homes are located. Um, based on our understanding of the conceptual model of the site, we've developed a work plan, uh, to further assess nature and extent. And if we can go to the next slide? Um, and what that will involve is continued PFAS sampling of groundwater and surface water on a semi-annual basis at the landfill. Uh, I would mention that this is a requirement at all municipal landfills around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so, uh, Nantucket is not unique. This is something that is, uh, we've been forced to bear in recent months. Um, we'll be establishing a field investigation to assess the nature and extent with new monitoring wells. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, uh, understanding whether, uh, the PFAS is extending below, beneath Long Pond to the other side or not. Uh, we'll be assessing impacts to Maticat Ditch and what may be, uh, passing through to the harbor. Uh, and following that field investigation, there'll be a report prepared with further recommendations. Uh, we expect the study to take anywhere from one and a half to two years, and that duration is because we want to collect additional sample analysis over the course of a year and make sure that we understand the trends, uh, and what's happening. The, um, um, map you see there shows some of the PFAS concentrations in shallow water that we have seen to date, and the red are the highest concentrations, over a thousand. You know, green are less than the standard of twenty, so we have a, um, a different range of concentrations at the landfill, and we suspect that may be attributed to some of past activities regarding co-compost or soil stockpiling and such. Um, but we'll be working to, um, investigate that further.
Thanks, Andy.
Landfill?
Yeah, and in addition to what CDM Smith is doing, we also have a proposal from Samborn Head, another consulting firm, for additional work at the landfill. And just very briefly, that involves initial characterization of reclaimed soil stockpiles at the landfill. Um, so the idea here is that we would be sampling the test pits, um, at different depth, depth intervals. Um, and in addition to that, Samborn Head is proposing to conduct a characterization of ground cover soils in the yard waste composting area, which is, um, in the southeast corner of the landfill site. Um, and that's to assess whether soils may contain elevated PFAS concentrations that might be attributable to the stockpiling of co-compost material in that area. So, just one additional update on the landfill, and I'm going to pass it back to Andy to give a wastewater update.
Okay, um, thanks. So, we can go to the next slide? Okay, great. So, we've been helping the town, uh, evaluate PFAS in the wastewater system for several years now. Um, you, you, you won't be able to read the details on this slide, but the point is that we started off by developing this flow chart with a series of steps, uh, and we refer to it as a decision matrix. So, this was really a programmatic plan, uh, that's been put in place that, um, the town has been following over a period of years. Um, there's five steps listed here, and we're actually in the middle of step three, so that shows that we've made some progress, and we're, um, bumping up against step four, so that's good. Um, a little bit about what we're doing, and if you can go to the next slide, please? Okay, so our objectives here are to identify PFAS sources that are, or may be contributing to the Surfside Wastewater Treatment Facility. Um, and at the same time, we also want to understand the distribution of PFAS within the wastewater treatment facility. Um, now, if we can just remember, the, the facility is not a creator of PFAS, they're a receiver, and they have to handle it and manage it. So, um, the sewer department is kind of a, uh, you know, a middleman having to deal with the implications of PFAS. Uh, on the bottom left, there's a map of the island, and that's just to show the sewer collection system, the, the four pump stations are marked there. We've been sampling, um, the pump stations over a period of years for PFAS in those areas. Um, we sample, uh, Seis concert sledge coming into Surfside. Uh, we sample leachate, uh, the landfill leachate over at Maticat, uh, at the Nantucket landfill. Um, we've expanded the program into some, uh, tributary areas within the C Street Pump Station area. And of course, we've been sampling at the wastewater treatment plant itself. On the right, that is a schematic of the treatment facility and the processes there. Uh, the white stars indicating locations where we've sampled. So, we are obtaining a pretty good understanding of the inputs or the influence to the wastewater treatment for system, and then we, how it's moving within the system, how it changes, and what the concentrations are in the effluent and the sludge. Uh, sludge obviously being most important because that, uh, I should call it residuals. That's what goes to the landfill for disposal. Um, if we go to the next slide, please? Um, so the actions that we've taken to date, I mentioned the source system, the sewer collection system sampling. We are now in our third year of doing that and bumping up against the fourth year, so that's going to be continuing on for some time, collecting a wealth of data to better understand what's going on in the system. Um, we've also completed several bench scale studies, uh, one of which was to assess the potential for PFAS removal of, uh, aeration tank foam, removal of PFAS from the aeration tank foam, the aeration tank being a process in the wastewater treatment facility. Um, and that had actually led us to assess PFAS, uh, presence within other, uh, dewatering systems within the treatment plant. Um, the picture over the right just really shows, uh, the sampling and the piloting that was done there. Uh, it was a week-long effort in the treatment facility, and that report has been issued recently. Um, we have also been assessing what's referred to as foam fractionation. It's becoming an increasingly, uh, used technology as a potential means of removing PFAS from landfill leachate. And, um, you can see a photo there of, uh, that pilot bench scale process. Uh, the idea is to generate foam, the foam, um, uh, the air particles that bubble up in the foam naturally carry the, the PFAS, and then you could remove the foam and eventually look at means of destructing that. Uh, the graph on the left shows some of the preliminary results we've seen. Um, and you can see that for some of the PFAS compounds, we're getting as much as hundred percent removal. That's what the bench scale is indicating anyway. Uh, that's mainly what we refer to as the long chain compounds. Um, we don't have as much success on removing short change compounds, but that is typical in the industry and what we're seeing. So, that's an area of study that, uh, engineers and those working on technology are working on. Um, the next slide, please?
Can I ask, just on that one, how would they scale that? You, I can see doing it in a, you know, I could see doing it on a bench in a scientific, you know, situation, but how would you scale something like that up?
Yeah, so typically, you start off with a bench scale, then you move into a pilot program, which would be, you know, not full size, but close to full size and eventually full scale. So, there is, uh, equipment actually available. It's quite large. It would have to be, you know, brought to the island, and you could actually test that process uh, in, in reality, uh, whether it's at the landfill or at the treatment facility. Um, we'll be working on setting up those, um, you know, the parameters for such studies. That's actually the next step, and that's what I was going to talk about here. In terms of accomplishments, as I mentioned, we're in year three of sampling. Um, we're establishing a path forward for source identification and mitigation. Um, the bench scale study revealed potential opportunity to treat wastewater treatment facility dewatering saturate, which would avoid recirculating PFAS, essentially taking it out of the system and reducing the concentrations, the idea being that would reduce what's entering into the residuals and eventually to the landfill. Um, and, uh, it seems that for the long chain PFAS, there may be some success in foam fractionation. So, the next steps are to further bench scale some of the technologies actually on site uh, for removal of such sledge saturate and move forward with, um, uh, full-scale pilots uh, for foam fractionation. And in the meantime, we are continuing to build the wastewater sampling database um, as we work to, you know, further assess, uh, technical options, uh, for the island. And that's it, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you, Andy, for that. Yeah, as we mentioned at the last, um, Select Board meeting, we've been to several conferences, and one of the key themes that keeps being, being brought up is, um, identify, separate, concentrate, and destroy. So, those are the kind of principles that we're trying to go by for addressing PFAS in our utilities. Um, I'm going to pass it off to Mark for a water department update.
Uh, thank you very much. I'm here to give a update on our Well 15 project. I wanted to put this slide up and send it to Erica. Thank you, Erica. When we talk about the aquifer, I think it's good to understand in the places where we have drilled and done geophysics, we're finding that the aquifer is set up into those three separate layers, the upper, what we call the middle, and then a totally confined lower aquifer below that Glacial Lake deposit. Well 15 and Well 16 in wires valley are in that upper aquifer, are as most public or private, uh, private wells, residential wells on the island. Um, below that layer at about eighty to ninety feet, we have a semi-confining unit that is, uh, not completely tight, but pretty tight, and hoping that that holds this PFAS contamination up in that upper aquifer and our, our, our deeper wells should be protected. Uh, the next slide, Eric, if you could, would just show you like a aerial photo of the locations. Uh, the three red dots are Well 15, closest to Old South Roadside. Twelve is in the middle. Uh, fifteen is on the upper side, closest to Milestone Road. So, south of Well 15 is where we have the Tom's Way contamination that was detected. Uh, natural groundwater flow in this photo would be north, right to the well field. We are sampling Well 16 and Well 12 monthly now. Uh, fifteen has been off for two years now, and it is still off. Since your declaration, uh, last week, we're able to move fast. Things are moving fast, like really fast. Uh, we're finalizing some contracts with a company out of Portland, Maine, who has built our filter system already. Once these contracts are finalized, we'll, uh, get a local trucker to go up and pick them up. Uh, we're working with a local contractor already, have already had meetings. Uh, I think the week of March 1st, we're going to start excavating, and, and, uh, myself and others in the building here are going to move some pipe and redirect it to a pad that we're going to pour. Those filters will be put on a pad. Uh, we, we are currently working on the, the permitting process with Mass DEP. Uh, there are two permits that we have to get to do this treatment system. That process has already started. So, things are moving really well. I think, you know, if everything keeps going well, we're going to be able to get this thing up and running before the summer season. Now, I've won a couple of summers without using Well 15 at all, but I always had it there as a backup in case the demand or fire demand or, or there was a demand on certain weekends, Fourth of July, where maybe we had to turn it on. Uh, the importance of having this up and running will help us, uh, be prepared for the summer season, and I think the way things are moving, we're going to be able to do that.
Great, thank you, Mark. Um, a couple additional quick PFAS updates for me. I'll give a update on the Mass DEP investigation at the 246 Fairgrounds, um, compound. Um, no huge updates here at the moment. Um, we had presented on the sampling results at the January 16th Board of Health Meeting. Um, a quick recap, one of the twelve sampling locations had a concentration detected above the PFAS citics reportable concentration of twenty nanograms per liter. It was detected just a little bit above that threshold. Um, and more details to come soon. Mass DP, Mass DEP is planning to issue, issue their report by the end of the month, so we will be keeping an eye out for that. Um, Mass DEP is also planning to be on the island on February 25th, I believe, um, weather permitting, and they're planning on sampling the geothermer well at the Fairgrounds Campus and, um, some sampling at additional locations in the area. Few more, uh, small updates on PFAS activity, activities. Um, we have been updating our web content. We recently posted a new page about the four PFAS disposal sites on the island. Um, that might be a unfamiliar term to some people, but that's what Massachusetts, um, Department of Environmental Protection, uh, says to, that's the term they use to refer to hazardous waste sites, um, and that includes PFAS sites. As mentioned, there are four of them on the island. Um, I'm also working on increasing data transparency. We had another webpage go live today that includes, um, private well sampling results from our, um, private well regulations, as well as voluntary samples that have come through the Health Department. Um, in addition, we're also working- In addition, we're also working on an updated fact sheet for people who get their private wells tested. With advice for what to do depending on your sampling results. CDM Smith is helping out with that. And we also met with Mass D E P. To make sure that we are providing the right recommendations. In addition to all of that, I have a quick update on PFAS handling protocols. A while back before my time with the town, we had prepared PFAS handling protocols, which are for the protection of workers and neighboring communities. CDM Smith had prepared these specifically for utility work. So the handling protocols covered the handling of soil and dewatering procedures. And CDM Smith also prepared a catch basin cleanout handling protocol for us. And the update here is that we're going to be engaging CDM Smith to develop another protocol for leachate handling. And then last update for me is that I've been meeting with groups around the island. I have plans to meet with the PFAS Action Group as well as the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I also met with the N A R B, the Nantucket Realtor Board this morning. And I guess I'll just say that if anyone else would like to meet and discuss, please feel free to reach out to me. And I'll open it up for questions.
I have one, if that's okay.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, on the landfill, we were measuring and we had a green dot for under. Under twenty parts per million. And I wondered, what's the granularity? When we test for the landfill or for some of these other testing, are we going down to? You know, are we testing and going down to one or two parts? You know, and is that going to be shown on this? Because I understand the state is potentially changing. Changing their standards. So I want to make sure that we're not, that we are, you know. That we can test, yeah, that we can, that we know if it's not, we're not just saying it's under twenty. If it's two parts, we can say it's two parts. Are we doing that or?
Andrew, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
Yeah. So so the latest EPA method that is available and it came out about a year ago is what's referred to as method sixteen thirty-three. That is the state of the industry and that is what we've been using. At the landfill and as well, actually at the wastewater treatment plant, there's a little variation in the methods depending upon whether it's solid or liquid. But we are using that and yes, it does go down quite low. I don't remember exactly to to what degree the numbers are. So the graphic I presented just kind of generally showed ranges. But the actual data in concentrations that have been received are appended to each of the subsequent reports. Which are, I believe, on the webpage. So you can see them that way.
All right, great. Thank you.
Meredith Lepre has her hand up online.
Hi, I just, I heard Andrew speak about the. Wells that D P H are doing around the public safety building and. I just, I didn't hear him say that all of them were positive for PFAS except for three. And I think most of them were above the four parts per trillion that the federal government has set, I believe, as. Drinking water and I just, this is obviously my soapbox to stand on is one of, one of the things is PFAS. And I think it's really important that we are clear that. Out of 12 wells, only three were non-detect and non-detect does not mean zero. So I don't know that I maybe I missed him saying that, but. I do think we need to think about the fact that the federal government says safe drinking water is four parts per trillion. And actually no PFAS level is safe. I think. Our scientists from Notre Dame that came in August said that he's never met a good PFAS. So. I just wanted that out there. And I guess, did I miss him saying that the others were all positive?
No, Meredith, I didn't mention that. And that's a great reminder. The map that we have up on our website is currently for the PFAS six. So that's something six PFAS and that shouldn't be compared to the mass to the EPA standards of four. Because that looks at individual PFAS as well as a hazard index, a sum of different PFAS. So it's a little bit apples and oranges, but you're absolutely right that PFAS are detected in most of those samples. And unfortunately PFAS are ubiquitous on the island and in around the world, frankly.
Okay, thanks, Meredith. Any other questions for the board? Thank you very much, everybody, for all the work that's going on in the background and for coming to report to us and to the community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, team. And just to add a tiny little close on that. The staff here meets weekly on PFAS. They are spending hours every week on these issues to help get a handle on it and deal with it here. And I think we may have mentioned this recently at a fall. Informational session that we had with D E P, they specifically stated that no town. That they know of in Massachusetts is doing what the town of Nantucket is doing. So we're pretty proud of that. Next, we've got fiscal 2026 Enterprise Fund budget reviews. We had had some a week or two ago. And tonight we've got the airport and solid waste. We're going to start with the airport and we have our airport manager, Noah Carburg, online.
Okay, thank you, Olivia. And thank you. I apologize. I couldn't attend in the previous session. And Olivia made time for me today. So thank you for that. I know these links are in your pack and I don't intend on reading it verbatim. But I will provide some some context and then defer to the chair and numbers of the select board for anything that would like me to go into greater detail on. And I'll answer any questions. So we do have a mission statement. I think the recent air disasters are a reminder that first and foremost. Our mission is to provide operationally safe air service. We are a safety driven organization, much like our chief regulator and funding agent, the FAA. Safety underlies everything that we do. We have three department goals listed. I'll just add context for our first goal. Phase one, the housing construction should be complete by July and ready for occupancy. So we're proud of that. We're moving forward with our PFAS investigation. We are currently in phase three under the M C P. So we will be issuing a report later this month. For phase three as well as our periodic I R A update. And those will be available. An update on designing terminal renovations and competing for federal funding. We discussed this over the previous four or five airport commission meetings. Estimates came in high. There's going to be a new airport manager. So we pressed the pause button on a couple elements of this project. The item that we are moving forward on is designing renovations to our geothermal system. We have an open looped system. And what we're learning from our phase three investigation is that we do want to treat groundwater. And that's currently in the runway one five approach and in the wellhead protection district. So we are, the commission gave staff direction in their previous meeting. We are going to utilize the existing geothermal system to keep the system in place, but pump and treat groundwater through a filter. Will be designed, but it'll likely be similar to what Mr. Willeth had discussed previously during his presentation. Yeah, we have initiatives. You can read them. Our current year accomplishments. We continue to develop our non-aeronautical portfolio of properties. Year over year for the past three years, we've seen increases in revenue. This is both due to putting out new leases and new non-aeronautical. Opportunities as well as. As the older legacy leases come due, we reset those to current market rates. I know it's not a competition, but we're very proud of our ecological stewardship of what we call the aeronautical grasslands. It's not a competition, but I will compete these up against anything that the land bank has in their properties or Conservation Foundation has in their properties. You know, forty years of an aeronautic centric land management regime combined with. Oh, twenty some years of a perimeter fence that excludes deer has led to a really rare and really phenomenal set. Of grassland species and we continue to manage those. We're proud of that. I just looked up this figure for my third bullet. I think the last item we took. To long term debt was in two thousand and sixteen. We've since had, I think, a hundred and thirty-five million dollars of funding projects approved since two thousand. In sixteen and we haven't taken any of those to long term debt. There are a lot of people who I need to thank and credit for that. But one thing we've been able to do and steward very well is leveraging our grant opportunities. Both at the state and federal level to, you know. Gain cost share in these projects and retire debt instead of taking it long term. And we are in the middle of transition planning from aqua stone forming foam to fluorine free foam. PFAS is. Always an issue, but as a reminder, we have the first known freestanding fuel farm conversion. From A triple F to a fluorine free foam. I believe we completed that in two thousand or two thousand and twenty-one. Last week, we took delivery of our new ARF truck. It came straight from the factory in Oshkosh. It has never seen A triple F. It will only see F three. We are also out on the street now is our R F P to decontaminate and convert. Our remaining truck from A triple F to F three. So we will, we will soon have a completely fluorine free foam system at the airport fuel farm and on our R vehicles. For a five year outlook, again, you can read about the regulatory mandates. You know, the point there is that. You know, policy changes happen in Washington. Policy changes happen and reinterpretation of policies happen. That's not as big of an issue most times, but the timing of these changes. Can be difficult. You know, we work with a five year capital plan and a. You know, fifteen to eighteen month local capital plan as far as annual town meeting. So some of these federal mandates, they can change and they can have very short, short timeframes for phase in. And these deadline requirements can be more difficult to meet sometimes than the, you know, having to. Actually take on the required work or change directions. Staffing items, you heard me discuss the airport's housing projects. Were past the point of impending retirements, but. You know, housing remains critical. It's critical for everyone on island. It's also critical. For the airport. We're in a position where we can own and control. Our own staffing needs without asking for general fund money. And by doing so, we can take. The need to house these employees away from Habitat for Humanity or the towns general. So we're going to continue to pursue ways that we can own, operate and maintain our own housing. And then for for big ticket capital items. And I'm sure, you know, when it gave us presentation to the finance committee, they're well aware of it. And I believe the select board is. As well, but when we make our capital presentations to the select board, there are sometimes very large ticket items that we take for borrowing. You know, the important part for these items is to really understand the cost share. For example. In the next three to four years, the airport will rehabilitate its main runway. And that has some really scary numbers associated with it. It could cost a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. But ninety-five percent of that will be funded by state and federal partners. So the amounts that will actually be subject to long term debt, if the airport even takes it long term. Is a relatively small portion of that. However, you know, for example, a five million dollar employee housing project, that is one hundred percent airport funded. So the cost to the airport, it's a hundred percent of that five million. And then succession planning, I want the select board to rest assured, we do it. The American Association of Airport Executives is our trade and lobbying group. And they have a great course system and we train to those courses and bring people online through those as well. You know, I'm going to skip through the the budget detail and the detailed revenue budget as I did with income. I'll move over into capital items and then I'll turn it over to the chair. To direct questions. But you know, the capital items we are bringing forward, three point six million for continued groundwater and soil investigation. I don't know when it will go, when it will stop. I don't think that's the important question to ask. I think the important question is. Is the airport prepared to continue to pay as they go for PFAS funding? And the answer is yes, we are. Paint, beads, rubber markings removal. This is an annual project for us. We divide our airfield up into three areas. Our primary runway, our secondary runway, and then our taxiways. And every year. We redo one of those systems that seems to work well for us. Based on the accumulation of multiple layers of paint wearing down beads. Our ARF truck replacements. Usually we hang on to equipment for ten or twenty or more years. I think we still, we just took. A nineteen eighty-three ARF truck offline, but we've had great staff, great mechanics. However, in the age of PFAS, our current airport three is going to be at its ten year timeframe in fiscal year twenty twenty-six. We're no longer obligated to keep it under the grants and we're going to get rid of it and get rid of and get. Another truck that has never seen A triple F. And will operate it as an F three truck. So new hardstands, gates one and two A. The select board has seen this project come up in different forms. But we've been rotating through our hardstand parking. As aircrafts get bigger, they need to be supported by concrete instead of asphalt. Concrete can bear the static load of larger aircrafts better than pavement, especially on a hot day. So this is for our remaining two hardstands that are not concrete now. One and two A. We have a new G S E storage facility. You know, we've made a commitment to take on several pieces of G S E and I'm sorry, G S E is an acronym for. Oh, I did say ground storage equipment. Bar ground equipment, so tugs, auxiliary ground power units, preconditioned air units. These are all pieces of equipment that we use to service and move around transient business jets. Put them in places where they're less impactful, let them run where they're not running a loud A P U. But we need a place to house this equipment. So that's the G S E storage facility. I think we've discussed the sound effect for noise barrier at a cost of five million dollars. I'm hoping that cost comes down. After we put it out to bid. We are moving away from a concrete wall as discussed in our last. Commission meeting, there is a. It's a plastic wall that's filled with a noise dampening material that can come in a modular. Format on trucks instead of being poured in place. And this will go on the the tree side of the ramp extension. So it's not visible from the road. Try trader upgrade. That's a fancy way of saying a new lab waste pumping facility. To make sure the increased quantities of waste that will come off of these larger regional jets would be compatible with the sewer system. And then, as I alluded to previously, the F B O ground support equipment. This is a lump, lumping in a few different pieces of equipment. I believe we have a bus, a tug, a G P U. We might have even thrown a lawnmower in there as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the airport budget for point twenty-six. So thank you again.
Matt?
Yeah, under, under revenue, why are the charges for services, they've gone down substantially? And maybe you've told us that before, but.
Yeah, so. I have a hard time answering. I'd like to follow up for the board email. What Munis does is it takes several. Different line item categories from the airport budget. The airport line item budget is several dozen lines. And it combines them into these very broad categories. It's different from the budget that I use. I don't necessarily like it. So. I don't know is the answer.
Okay. Yeah, I just, that was substantial. Everything else looked kind of in line. That one just kind of jumped out at me.
Yeah, remind me that, Mr. Could you remind me the category again? Is it charges?
Charges for services?
Yeah, I really presume that that's just a. A difference in summing the individual line items that make up that that full line. As charges for services should be, should be increasing along the trend that we've seen.
Okay, thanks, Noah. Anybody else? Tom?
Good evening, Noah. I have a quick question on the big ticket capital.
I have a quick question on the big-ticket capital item that you have here on the five-year outlook. On the part that says the main runway is likely to exceed $100 million, but will be funded 95.5 through federal and state sources. Why, and then on the next line, phase two, it costs $6 million, but for housing. Why is that not eligible for the same pot of money that were the 95.5?
Eligibility requirements for the AIP program would dictate that. So the FAA does a really good job of funding flatwork, you know, runways, taxiways, aprons. They don't really fund vertical construction or buildings.
So for that $6 million, you're building housing. I, I know the answer to this, but for, for the public's knowledge, you're building housing, correct?
Well, we're trying to build housing.
Okay, how, about how many units is that envisioned for, for that $6 million?
Okay, so the phase two, when we say phase two, we were referring to a townhouse. The townhouse would have been made up of two units, sort of two sides, an A and a B, with each unit having three bedrooms.
Okay, and are those units restricted for municipal preference? Are they deed restricted? How, how does, are other first responders allowed to live in those units? Is it part of the town? How does that work?
So therefore, airport employees, if the airport builds a townhouse, puts these out to airport employees and only rents unit A, it can offer unit B to police and fire. Because those two, you know, those two classes of municipal employees have roles under the airport emergency plan.
Okay, thank you.
Malcolm?
Yes, your budget has, and you know, $100 million runway, et cetera. You talk about federal and state aid. What does our plan be? What happens if we don't have that federal aid? Because the president administration may not want to reduce the overall federal budget.
Then we don't build it. You know, the FAA builds runways, and in exchange for the money, they, you know, they provide a lot of, a lot of requirements for the airport to meet. And those are sometimes burdensome. So if the FAA is not going to show up with the money, I don't think, not, I can't speak for the airport commission, obviously, Mr. McNabb, but the FAA can't show up with the money, then I don't think the airport needs to acknowledge those restrictions.
Okay. I mean, you said, you said we wouldn't build it, but if, if you're not going to build it, then do we need it?
So here's the catch-22. The airport is obligated to keep that runway in a safe and serviceable condition. But the airport is not obligated to do that on its own dime, at its own cost. Because typically, the FAA has always come to the table with required safety projects. And specifically, there are ways to score a runway. It uses a number called a pavement condition index. And when a runway is eligible according to pavement condition index, the FAA funds construction of it. You know, that might be over several years, but it's an FAA responsibility to fund that piece of pavement.
Okay, thank you, Noah.
You're welcome.
Up next?
We have solid waste manager Chris Lowe, and we have George Aronson, I think, is online as well, our solid waste consultant. But I think Chris is going to start us out. And I think the DPW director is on as well, just in case.
Perfect, thank you, Erica. So we have the mission statement up there for solid waste. And it's for the Nantucket DPW Solid Waste Division to provide effective management of Nantucket solid waste today and into the future, guided by principles of sustainability and accounting for the balance of economic, environmental, and social health of our island. We're going to go down to department goals. We have a number of department goals listed here. I'm not going to read them for verbatim, but just kind of summarize them. So we have, one of the goals is to manage Nantucket solid waste in the most efficient and cost-effective method while maintaining permit compliance. We also had a goal of producing the RFP, the Request Proposal, to operate the solid waste facility, which includes the MRF, the landfill, CND facility, and all the other places that accept the waste from the island. So the RFP was issued in June 23, 2024. It was well-attended. There was a mandatory pre-bid, but only one response, which we received from Waste Options in September 26. Solid waste recommended. The award for the contract to Waste Options to the Select Board, January 29, 2025. And this new contract will start and begin December 1, 2025. To date, solid waste, and George Aronson specifically, has been doing a lot of work on negotiating a waste service agreement based on the RFP, and that Waste Options submitted with their response. And we're making some very good progress to date. So part of the negotiations that we've been doing is we've been negotiating an asset purchase and sale agreement. We've been putting together a transition plan, all while operating under the existing WSA that originated 25 years ago with numerous edits. Solid Waste has hired a consulting engineer, which Andrew Shapiro mentioned. I'm sorry, Sanborn Head. So the consulting engineer is going to be looking at the landfill for utilization and expansion. They're going to understand and improve the utilization of the active line landfill cells that we are operating today, as well as to oversee and do a peer review of the build of Cell 3B. They're monitoring impacts of emerging contaminants such as PFOs. And they're going to be reviewing a final cap of Phase 1 and explore build-out for potential of the site assigned area for expansion possibility. Now to initiatives, Erica. So the town is the better control, the initiatives, one of the key initiatives is to, the town to better control tipping fees and deliveries and disposal costs for the mainland destinations per the new waste service agreement that's being developed. We're working very closely with Waste, I'm sorry, with Waste Options, which is the sole bidder and the incumbent of the solid waste operation, through the creation of implementation of the new WSA, the asset purchase and sale agreement, and the transition plan. We strive to improve managing solid waste, reducing costs, while improving permit compliance and transparency. Separate process residuals in NERNICS from CND waste. We're working to get, we're separating NERNICS and CND to differentiate the cost of that and to save the town disposal money for that material that we ship off island. We moved hard-to-manage waste to the main, oh, recently removed hard-to-manage waste to the mainland by barge. And we're reviewing and evaluating, implementing emerging technologies to better manage difficult solid waste streams, i.e. wastewater treatment plant sludge, mixed plastics, and NERNICS proposed in the RFP response by Waste Options. We're creating, the budget was create, I'm sorry. The budget's a hybrid budget, and it's based on fiscal year 2026 for the five months operated underneath the existing contract and the fiscal year expenses in seven months underneath the new contract with, with a whole new set of expenses. On accomplishments, Erica? So the town has negotiated a lower tip fee for NERNICS, and we're working on lower tip fee for residuals to the mainland in order to help provide revenue, save revenue with the town. We're cleaning up the site, reducing stockpiles of hard-to-waste managed material to better organize and make the solid waste facility shine. We, Waste Options did their first shipment of tires recently by barge to New Bedford that went off without a hitch. They've also did a shipment of scrap metal recently by barge and moved approximately 160 tons worth of metal that they've been collecting over the years. So that's making an impact on the, the look of the landfill, I'm sorry, of the solid waste facility as well. We've made a number of, made a number of outstanding minor facility repairs and improvements at the Teoli. At the Teoli, we've improved attendant working conditions, the drop-off and shopping procedures with more improvements to come. We have a textile collection and recycling program. We've increased the amount of contamination collected during the textile collections from 17.47% to 1.97%. So less, so we're, 98% of what we are collecting and shipping out, we are getting paid for, and which is a great, a great thing that the attendants are working very hard and following some good guidance that we're giving them. Along with the collection of the textiles, we diverted, this is brand-new, we've diverted almost 2,000 pounds of books we're recycling, the books we receive at Teoli. And these are the books that folks have not taken, have to take it or leave it. And typically, those books would go into the CND facility and be shipped off island as disposal. We also created, well, we also continued a latex paint collection. We held five, well, we collected latex paint at five of the household hazardous waste collection events. Typically, we do not collect latex paint, but we felt that that was a great opportunity to get it because we typically turn people away for that. And we also had a standalone collection. So collectively, between the five collections, the household hazardous waste event, as well as the standalone collection, we removed 21,800 pounds off the island at a considerable savings to the town. Solid waste received 68,500 tons of solid waste at the facility. Mixed excavation waste is still the leader in volume. Last year, it was 32,000 tons. Lethal yard waste was at 8,100 tons. And the CND, just about 10,000 tons with MSW at 23,000 tons. Still landfilling only 10% of that volume that we've come in. So through recycling and working hard, Waste Options has done a great job to stick with just the 10% total volume. I mentioned, we are bringing on that engineer, which is Sanborn Head. And they're going to evaluate the landfill to make recommendations to manage existing disposal capacity, future disposal capacity, perform permit compliance inspection reports, gapping of the Phase 1, investigation of PFOs sources within the landfill, as well as future build-out. The budget. So we've worked very closely with finance. The budget was a tricky budget to try to, for us to come up with. Because as I did mention, we are working with five months of the existing solid waste, waste service agreement with Waste Options, as well as working with what they proposed in their submittal to the town for the RFP. So we have two different numbers, and we all, yeah, so we have two different pricing. The budget was, but we're also building a new budget, which is going to, not a budget, a billing system, which is going to reflect the eight solid waste functions in the RFP. In the summary, in summary, the fiscal year budget for fiscal year 26 was prepared based on historical volume tracking. The development of budget for fiscal year 26 was certainly unique. This hybrid budget was based on operating, as I mentioned, five months under the existing WSA and seven months under the brand-new WSA that we're currently negotiating with Waste Options. The RFP was submitted, I'm sorry, the RFP response submitted has an increase in cost for some services and a decrease in cost in other services, being addressed in the new WSA contract. Solid Waste will recommend increases charged on some wastes and implement a charge on items presently not charged for, to raise additional revenue. This proposed increase in revenue alone, along with generous contribution of the general fund, will maintain a balanced budget. Okay, the EIRs. So the EIRs, we do have some expense increase requests. The major, the major, the major EIRs are focused around the professional services as well as the freight, which constitutes many different categories of billing. It's not just professional services, as one might think, for engineering. It includes all of Waste Options' billing, transportation off the island, disposal, and as well as the engineering that's necessary to, you know, keep us afloat and to maintain compliance. And then on capital items, we did request six capital items. Most of those capital items, except for one, are capital items that will cover and, and give us kind of a safety net for owning and, for owning and maintaining the new assets that we are purchasing from Waste Options, which include the MRF, the MRF buildings, I'm sorry, not the MRF, the compost, compost buildings, as well as the CND buildings. And in closing, Solid Waste looks to forward to working with the Long-Term Solid Waste Planning Workgroup, Town Administration, our Solid Waste Consultant, Finance Director, and the Select Board to review and revise solid waste fees in advance of the new WSA going into effect on December 1, 2025. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're postponing the departmental report, Town Administration. Any committee reports? All quiet out there?
Well, I attended one of the kitchen cabinets.
Well, I attended one of the kitchen cabinets out at Bartlett's yesterday for the planning. And it was, there were 16 or 17 people. It was, it was supposed to take an hour and a half. There were so many people, it took about two hours. I think there was a lot of good input and a lot of the things that people are concerned about are the same things we've been concerned about, it's traffic and et cetera. But it's, it was, but there were a lot of good suggestions, a lot of things that are being going forward, so. If people have a chance to do it before Friday, they should do it.
Time's running out. Anybody else? Tom?
Don, please.
I was just going to mention a couple of things we did. We had a two-hour Capcom meeting yesterday and we were going to do some revamping of the Rory's, which we didn't actually get to that part, so we've pushed that to the next one. But we went over all of the public bathrooms and the necessities of, of improvements there and a whole bunch of different options that I'm hoping that we can discuss a little bit more about facilities and some policy decisions again, so we can be a little bit more ahead of some of this stuff. Because it's just, you know, the, the costs of these things are staggering, but we really need to maintain these surfaces that are open to everybody and, and improve the services that are offered. But there are, there are other options that we need to consider with all of the office spaces and accessibility and so forth going forward. And then the Island Home is really ramping up to get just sort of all of the information out there in further detail. We had Pierce Cotay at the Island Home today. I was interviewed. We obviously had our representatives there for a meeting. And it was just, it was just really nice to be, to be over there again and the staff is amazing. The residents are lovely to see. And I just wanted to mention it. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to mention it before, more in Select Board comment, not a committee report. But this afternoon, as Senator Seer and Rep. Mowgli said, we, they did the high school today and got a tour of a bunch of classes. And I hadn't been to the high school in a while and it was really neat to go to some of the classes and see how specific they were. The nursing class, they were watching a video and then going to do like a mock demonstration of how to change a bedpan, which was interesting. And they had personal finance class, which Julian and Thomas thought was, you know, oh, it's good that you guys are taking this now because, you know, when you're in your 30s and not know this, it's not, it's not so great. So that, that was interesting. And then AP history and a couple other classes. And just the teachers and students were responsive to them and asked them some questions about their careers and maybe how to get involved with state, local government, et cetera. So it was just heartening. So it was really good.
Okay, if there's no other committee reports, I am, would accept a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the item in the agenda here.
So move?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, my roll call, Matt?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And Malcolm?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So we are going to enter executive session, which means everybody needs to depart the room.
And I have to end this meeting.
And the Zoom meeting will come to a close.